Welcome to the City of East Providence City Council meeting. Today is Tuesday, January 21st. May we all rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So if we could just hold off for a minute or two while Councilman Kahoon gets back to his seat.
Mr. President, if I may, while we're waiting, I don't think we have to stand for this, I would just like to send condolences from the city council to the Rheinbold family of East Providence. Donald Rheinbold, who just passed away at age 91, and who ran a business in this city for a good number of those years, worked right up until age 90, in fact, then recently passed away, and a local family who has contributed a lot to East Providence. So I'm sure the council joins me in sending out condolences to Mrs. Rheinbold, with three children and the grandchildren.
Thank you, Councilman, for bringing that to our attention. Madam Clerk, may we start off with a roll call vote?
Yes, Councilman Kahoon.
Here.
Councilman Morado.
Yes.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Here.
Councilwoman Souza.
Here.
And Council President Britto.
Here.
Next item, please.
Next item is the consent calendar.
Motion to approve.
Second, roll call vote, please.
Councilman Kahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye.
Make a motion to seal the minutes in executive session.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to seal the minutes from executive session. Councilwoman Souza, second, and by Councilman Morado, roll call vote, please.
Councilman Kahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye.
Before we begin, the next item, which will be public comment.
Licensing and event approvals.
We want to start with that, okay? Let's move along.
For licensing and event approvals, we have La Tavolo, application for vituline license, as well as the application for holiday sales.
Is the applicant here at this time? Would you like to approach the podium, please? Can you just state your name for the racket?
Joseph Martinez, Jr.
Martin Garcia.
Okay. Before we begin, I'd just like to ask the city clerk, as she approaches the chamber desk, whether or not all the information that is needed is in place?
Yes, it is.
Okay. At the pleasure of the council, anyone have any questions at this time?
Make a motion to approve.
Second, roll call vote.
Councilman Kahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. We'll be dropping off presentations for the grand opening.
All right, very good. Thank you, sir. Maybe a couple of meatball sandwiches if that's where... We have one more?
Yeah, there are a little more.
Okay, we have one more?
Yep. Yes. Holiday license. This one is for La Tavolo also, application for holiday sales license.
Motion to approve.
Second, roll call vote, please.
Councilman Kahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Britto.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next item looks like are the communications?
Yes. Billy Lewis, sewer fees and usage for restaurants.
Mr. Lewis, how are you, sir?
Very good, yourself?
All right. Becoming a real regular up here.
Oh, no. Could have thought you were somebody. I wanted to know how we can balance off the water usage in the sewer fee in restaurants. We pay a very high sewer fee, sewer usage, compared to the water we use, we definitely use it, but it's not going in the sewer. Between soda guns, ice machines, soda systems, just by having to provide water for customers, it's being consumed, not being completely used in the sewer. So I was up there trying to figure out a way to either have a separate meter for those systems, maybe some way to kind of balance it off.
So, Mr. Lewis, a deduct meter is not an option for commercial enterprises, or...
Now, a deduct meter would have to be put on everything that's in question, correct?
No, a deduct meter would zoom for the... No, actually, I... Correct. I'm thinking more along residential, whatever goes out for a sprinkler system, that's where the deduct meter would be placed. Anything that's connected to, you know, a toilet dish, laundry dishwasher, it would bypass that, so. I mean, it could work if you look at your... And I don't know how that applied to commercial, but it could work where if that plumbing is routed towards the soda machines and customer water. Right. It could work in that way.
Now, that's what I was wondering.
But not for toilets and...
Can we do that? Because it would be a number of items that you're hooking up.
Correct. I think it would be best to check with the building inspection to see if, one, is it allowable for commercial, Steve Kudrow, actually, DPW, and, two, how can you bypass, and how would it work in your application? It's a valid question. It really is, and I certainly don't have the answer to that question. I'm not sure if everybody does, though. I'll be honest with you, I was just wondering. You know, it raises some really good points that you brought up this evening. I would definitely have to, you know, something that we should circle back in one fashion or the other, get back in touch with you, have this discussion, because it's not only you, there's going to be other companies approaching restaurants with the same idea or saying, hey, you know, ice machine, soda machine, with soda, you know.
Just for the fact that you give every customer, I mean, and you have to, I mean, it's just good business, you know, so, you know, figure out a system that we could come up with where everybody's happy. I mean, we all have to pay our sewer fees, I mean, I just don't want to spend a lot more than I need to.
Makes sense.
No, but, Mr. President, it makes sense, and I know we want to stay business friendly, so I think first step would be if we can set up a meeting with you, Mr. Lewis, and any other business person who's interested with Mr. Kudrow, the department head, and see what options you have, and maybe, could you, I don't know, Mr. Fattato's here, can you help Mr. Lewis facilitate a meeting with Mr. Kudrow? And if you know Mr. Fattato from administration, if you can talk to him and maybe to get something in, possibly our next meeting, we could have an update, not a solution maybe, but an update as to where it goes. Other than that, I don't... Your basic concern is that, like some homeowners, water that's being used, but you're being billed for it all going into the sewer system, which it is not.
Correct.
So that should be a fix, not easy, but it should be a fix somewhere along the line, I would think, where we could separate that out. So maybe tomorrow, if you could reach out to Mr. Fattato, and he could set up this meeting with Mr. Kudrow, or the water superintendent, whoever the appropriate person is, and, Madam Clerk, could we make a point to have this reviewed again for the next meeting?
Sure, we can put it under continued business.
Continued business, just so we don't lose track. You won't have to come, but, you know, welcome to, of course.
Yeah, I just want to kind of get the problem solved.
It's a good point, I never thought about it, for businesses, yeah.
I never did till I fell behind on the water bill, and then I had to pay it all at once. So, thank you. Very much.
You're welcome, listen. Next item, please.
Next item is public comment. We don't have anybody from the public signed up to speak. So the next item would be mail appointments without council approval, and that would be for Ronald Narwaki Tree Warden for the City of East Providence. His one-year term begins January 1st, 2020, and ends 12/31/2020. No vote is needed by the council.
Not sure if Mr. Fattato has anything to say, however, considering that we are on mayors' appointments, I would just like to acknowledge that the new chief of staff, while we're speaking on behalf, just if you could just stand, please, Napoleon Gonzalez, new chief of staff to the Department of... Department of Administration, so, thank you, sir, welcome, and wish you a lot of luck as well. Thank you. So this appointment, it's not up for a vote?
No, it's just a letter of communication appointment to the council.
Okay, very good. Let's move right along to council communications, then.
Next item is council communications. As Council President indicated, the first item is discussion synchronization of the budget year to the tax collection cycle. Councilman Morado.
So I put this on the docket, just to have a quick discussion. I know that the previous councils have talked about synchronization for a long time, and I know that some of that money was taken away for road repairs, and that the city needs approximately $50 million to synchronize. However, I've been in touch with Paul Lubel. Someone brought an interesting concept, and I kind of had him look into it, and it might be a little bit too simplistic in the idea, but it's just an idea, and he's also looking into other possibilities. But the idea is to synchronize, having us synchronize a month at a time. For example, our fiscal year ends, begins November 1st, one year bringing it back to beginning October 1st, even after a year or two, and then so on and so forth, until we were synchronized. Sounds a little too easy, or too good to be true, but I just, not to spend too much time on it, but it's something that even worth looking into.
Synchronization is always worth looking into, and it's probably the longest running issue I've had here in East Providence. I'd like to say, you know, when I got your call, I contacted the State Auditor General, and he is going to meet with the mayor, Malcolm, myself, some people from the Department of Revenue this Friday, and we're going to brainstorm, brainstorm something which he could call synchronization light, that is, synchronizing without the benefit of a bond, because I don't think, you know, we're going to be able to do both the school and synchronization bond, or... So anyways, what does synchronization light get you? In all likelihood, still gets you tans every year, because your cash flows are the same, they don't change, no matter what your year end is. You collect taxes at certain times, you pay your bills at certain times, in January or February, you run out of money. No matter what, no matter what your fiscal year end, your cash flows are the same. Synchronization with a bond would have covered that deficit, and then when you paid off the bond at the end of how many years, you know, you'd be okay cash-wise, too. So you'd still need tans. So what does synchronization get you? The school, if you ever synchronize your fiscal and your tax year, the school department would probably name the new high school after you. It is that much more difficult for them to run their business with a 630 school year that everyone else in the state has, and ride requires reporting on, and then we have a November 31st year end, and then the federal government has a different year end, so the school runs three year on three budgets. When you synchronize without the benefit of a bond, what you'd have to do is change your year end. You would incur a book loss, and it is really an accounting loss. It would show up on your books for one year in the income statement, and it would exist in your fund balance for as long as, you know, you don't pay it off, you don't cover it with profitability. Is that a bad thing? Normally, the House with the Auditor General is going to probably tell us if it's bad or not. The state requires you to have a profit. Can you make an exception? That's what we're going to talk to the Auditor General about. You know, you could phrase it in a certain way that users of the financial statement will know, it's a one-time thing, has nothing to do with your operations, that it had to do with synchronization. Do you want to do it right now? That's another question. So in order to synchronize, you would have a short year end, 630, you would have a new year end at 630, eight-month year end, so you would have to have an audit on the eight-month year end. You would have to start budgeting sometimes in March and April of whatever year you decide to synchronize. If it's this year, it's March and April, you're going to start budgeting again, because your year end is now 630, and your charter has a different year end in it, and you'd have to create all those new deadlines, when you're going to get your numbers. You know, you just had a budget, I'm not sure you want to jump into another one, but even if you did, do you want the financial community now to see a different set of financials that has a loss in it, that you can explain? You're going out for bond pretty soon, in a year or two, on the new high school. You know, it's just another explanation that you're going to have to do to the financial community, to bond rating agencies, to lenders, you know. You may not want to do it right now. You may want it to be as consistent and as clean as possible until you get that bond. In the future? I don't know. Once the bond, you have the bond, maybe, but that's a decision that you'll have to make. We'll get you some guidance from the Auditor General and from everybody else as to whether or not you even can show loss, and how you can show it, and things like that, and see what happens after the meeting on Friday.
But the loss, again, would be one in asterisk.
Yeah, oh, yeah, you can explain any way you want, and a clever wordsmiths can certainly say, this is one time, it was extraordinary, it had nothing to do with operations, it's book loss, counting loss.
And that will... I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilman. I was just going to say, but that will reflect in the auditor's report as well.
Yeah, and then, you know, the auditor can do it in his opinion, you know, it shows a loss, but it's not really. You didn't have this, this was your profit surplus, would be.
But over time, would it be the best thing for the city, over time? Not necessarily now, but maybe five years from now? Where we're beyond the school bonding capacity, and we're moving forward, and we're looking to synchronize with the state?
You know, I don't know if it lived up to Malcolm and the mayor and you guys, but maybe, yeah. You know, it's not a huge benefit for the city, because you always have to do tans, but the school department would certainly be grateful, and, you know, maybe with everyone else in the state, you know, when they talk about the governor's budget, you know, it's 630, and, you know, everything is, will be, you know, in step with whatever the state wants.
Why do we always have to use tans, when in the past, it was always a good thing? To avoid the tans, so we wouldn't be paying the, in excess of $300,000 to $500,000 in interest?
But you will always have tans unless you have an influx of cash, like a bond or saving up in the sync fund, you know, you have $13.5 million in the sync fund at one time, and that would have necessitated a much smaller bond to, you know, to cover your cash flow loss in January and February, but, you know, without the benefit of a bond or a reserve or something like that, you'll always be stuck with tans. As your cash flow, your cash flows, you pay a certain amount out in January, and you get a certain amount in January. You pay a certain amount out in February, and you get a certain amount in February. That's not going to change, no matter what your fiscal year is.
And I understand you, and I hear you loud and clear, however, though, in the past, it was always this, let's synchronize.
Yeah, it would have been worth it, I think, to do.
So now I'm hearing it's just, it's almost like a bad thing to synchronize now, or not so much a bad thing, but we're always going to be paying tans, but in the past, to realign, that was never the concern, that we'll be paying tans, because we will be realigned with the state's...
Because we always thought we'd either, you know, accumulate enough in surplus, and we were doing it at a rate of 3.6 million a year at one time, and then getting the bond for the rest. And it would have, it would have worked out, but now that, you know, the $3.5 million of synchronization fund is gone, it'll be applied towards your debt.
Maybe it's going to.
Well, it's kind of earmarked now for debt, debt payment. You know, if you wanted to say, we're still going to synchronize, you would have to find a way of, you know, reestablishing, you know, that money for the reserve, or to get another bond.
Well, it was useful idea throughout to start getting the wheels.
Not a bad idea.
No, I think it's a good idea.
And we'll have an answer for you, you know, by the next council meeting.
I know it's not as simple, I get all that, it's just worth looking at, that was all.
Yeah, it's a good thought.
May I ask one question?
Yeah.
President, and this is, I'm going to ask you to speculate here, Paul, so if you're not comfortable doing it, that's fine. Has there been any discussion at the state level, or in other states, about potentially trying to synchronize with the federal fiscal year for some of the same kind of rationale? I mean, I imagine, you know, states get a substantial amount of income from the federal government. I imagine that they're somewhat in a similar position, or no?
They are. I keyed in synchronization of tax fiscal year to Google, and I got one hit. It happened in Pawtucket, probably 25 years ago, and they went out for bond. I didn't get any other hits that anybody else has done it, thought about doing it, so I guess the answer probably is no, but it could have happened, I just didn't find it.
But there's likely no movement currently afoot to move on that direction?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Next item is discussion, 2019, 2020 budget item discrepancies of the certified budget. Councilman Morado.
So if we get on the... It's not a, I'm looking at it as a discrepancy, it's just, could be a misprint or an oversight. I just want to make sure that when this budget, the certified budget, is in fact printed, that we are not backtracking and reprinting stuff. There's one item that I did find in the canvassing, for example, we did vote on three part-time positions, if I'm not mistaken, and it's now currently showing one full-time, correction, two full-time positions, and I don't even know, I don't know if we have the ability as a council to say, all right, this amount of money is going to be allocated for these part-time positions, but we certainly didn't approve two full-time. I just want to make sure that that reflects it when it is printed, so that the public picks up a budget. I'm sure that was an oversight, and I just want to bring that to the attention of maybe the finance director, or whoever will be printing these, you know, budget books.
If I may, through the chair, if council members see any other issues that aren't quite lining up, and you want to just send them to me, just as a way to sort of centralize the list, I can follow up the finance department, or whoever's the best party responsible, I'll drill down on that for you.
That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Next item, please.
The next item is update and discussion on Watchamoket Square meeting, January 15th, 2020. Council Vice President Rodrick.
Mr. President, very quickly, I'd just like to keep things current and updated. I did go to a meeting last week at Talk Watten on the waterfront, and there was a large public response, maybe 75 people there. The room, the theater that they provided us for the meeting, that room was full, there was a complete presentation about all the plans, so I would just report that it went well, and Mr. Fazioi and the team that is looking into the whole Watchamoket area said they're in the early stages, they'll be back in a month or two, as they get closer and closer with a more specific plan. The one common denominator I would mention, and I, something Councilwoman Souza has talked about before, and I think we're all concerned about, almost to a person, everyone was concerned with the traffic flow in Watchamoket Square proper, the streets, the fact that so much converges there, the bike path, Warren Avenue, Valley Street, Waterfront Drive, we all know a local business was struck by a car the other day coming around that corner and couldn't negotiate it. Everyone agreed, we've got to do something there, and I think there's a movement right now to get a flashing light of some kind put there in some location that will at least help to slow down an area that's a troubled spot. So that's all, it was a good meeting, and we'll see where this goes.
Thank you, Councilman. And quick.
The next item is discussion. Is your number up? Public safety program in East Providence. Councilman Morado.
So I put that on the docket, and I thought it was a catchy phrase, is your number up? Doesn't mean that, is your number up as, you know, you need to go see Revell's funeral. Is your number up being, is your house number up on your residence? And I actually stole this idea from the UK, and being a police officer for 19 years, I can honestly attest to the fact that, especially after hours, second or third shift, trying to find a house number for someone that's in need of police or rescue, and the number is not properly displayed on the house, is very frustrating, and I know that it happens all over, and I know it's happening in East Providence, as well as other communities. So, you know, and we also have an ordinance on this, it's Chapter 4, city ordinances regarding numbering specifications. It clearly states where, size, contrast, and color, everything is spelled out in Chapter 4 of our city ordinances. But the idea is that, and I'll just read this briefly, you are at risk because emergency crews cannot see house numbers as illness, and injuries can occur at any time. I ask you to ensure that your house number is clearly visible from the road by day and night, so that when you need rescue, fire, or EMTs to respond, they can find you easily. Basically, if we can't find you, we can't help you. I recommend, from experience, that the house number be placed anywhere around the front entry, whether it be above, below, or left or right, easy for police and rescue to shine a light at night and easily find you. Mailbox numbers are fine, but when mailbox numbers are located across the street, it just takes that extra minute or two to locate you. And I'll leave you with this, on this issue, most importantly, with all these apps now for food delivery, you don't want your food to arrive cold, so if you remember anything else, just remember that, so, that's all I have on that.
Thank you, Councilman. It's interesting.
I might have to tell you.
Through the chair, I just want to say to Councilman Morado, I second that. For 30 years, when I was doing home visitations for schools throughout the city, not only were some numbers in bad spots, a lot of houses had no numbers, and I think that's a safety issue. I don't know if it's the law, or an ordinance, or what we can do, but, you know, houses should at least have to have a number, and hopefully, you know, in a prominent place, but I thank you for bringing that up. Thank you.
It's interesting how you bring this up, and, you know, the first thing that came to my mind when you started talking about that is, over in my area, it's either Pearl or Preceau, one of the two streets, it's just the opposite effect. So you start off with the low numbers, and it works out, and then it goes back down again.
Yeah, it does.
So it starts off with 15, 17, you know, 19, and then it could be 13.
So we all have, for some reason, every community I know where I work, there's one particular street, they jump from 20, you have a house number 22, across the street would be 48, and no one can explain why. And a lot of... And a lot of times what we do is we have the dispatcher, have that person come out and flag us down, you know, it gets to that point.
But in this case...
But if it's a person that needs the help, they can't come out and flag us down.
In this case, though, it, the numbers go, it goes up and then it drops back down, which is very unusual.
Yeah. But, so that's the concept, it's just to help us, help you, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next item, please.
The next item is discussion, additional streetlights on Newport Avenue, Council President Britto.
This here has absolutely nothing to do with a streetlight being out, but it has everything to do with Newport Avenue, that there's missing lights on poles. And what I mean by that, if you go down Newport Avenue, in certain areas, you would see that every other light, every other pole, excuse me, has a light, and then there could be three or four poles where there's no light at all. And just, it was brought to my attention by a constituent, in that area where there's no lights, in the three or four poles where there's no lights, it's dock. And if I'm not mistaken, last year someone was hit by a car in and killed in that particular area. So I'm just wondering, at this point in time, if we could identify these areas, because I noticed now that's on my mind, on Pawtucket Avenue over by Agawam, same situation where there's every other light, and then boom, there's about two or three poles with no lights. So it's not a matter of a light being out, or poor visibility, or we don't have an LED light, there's absolutely no light at all. And I'm just wondering if something could be done about that? If the national grid, if we contact national grid, or if we, you know, how that could, how that can be explored further? That's all.
I have noticed that too, Council President, throughout some areas in the community, as you mentioned, and I wondered if there were instances where their lights had come down because they were broke or needed to be repaired, and then just subsequently never were replaced. So that would be interesting in knowing if those are what's happening, or if they're just downsizing the numbers, particularly being a state road too, as you mentioned, Newport Ave. I wonder if that has something to do with it being a state road?
Again, it's just FYI, and hopefully we can look into that. Next item, please.
The next item is announcement for community meeting on January 23, 2020, regarding Grassley Plains Park, Councilman Morado.
Yeah, I just want to again remind the public that I'm holding a, hosting a community meeting along with Councilman Cahoon at the Evangelical Church at 165 Ram's Ave. And the community meeting is to hear concerns, comments, ideas in regards to Grassley Plains Park, installation of soccer fields, and whatever else comes up. So it'll be this Thursday, 6:00 p.m., 165 Ram's Ave.
Thank you, councilman. Next item, please.
Next item is War II Community Meeting, February 25, Weaver Library, 6:00 p.m., Councilwoman Souza.
So I just wanted to announce, a lot of residents throughout the city and in War II have reached out either through phone calls, or instant messenger, or email with their concerns about a multitude of issues that have gone on in the city, that we have tried to discuss or address in one fashion or another, and I thought it would be a good time to probably come together as a group and talk amongst ourselves with some other administrators from the city, to come up with some plans to resolve some of the issues that we're dealing with in the community, such as the road infestations, speeding, sidewalk and road conditions, and anything else that has been on your mind and that you've wanted to discuss. Again, this is open to all residents throughout the city, anyone can attend. It is being held here in War II at the Weaver Library at 6 o'clock, there is no end time, so certainly come in after work. They do have a wonderful section for children, so daycare is not an issue, the kids could be in the children's section of the library, reading some books or doing some activities while we engage in some good conversation to benefit the community as a whole. I will be announcing it again throughout the month of February and probably through social media to keep everyone informed that the meeting will be held at the library starting at 6:00. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Moving right along to the next item.
The next item is continued business, discussion and vote regarding Hunts Mills Dog Park, Council Vice President Roderick.
Through the chair, thank you. It's really not my issue, I just wanted, as a courtesy, again, my intent here on this council is to not let things get away from us and to bring them up, and I think between the last meeting and tonight, it has been determined that this is one of the capital projects that we, as a council, did not approve. So I would defer, although in this case, the council president was instrumental, and I've prepared to support you, I think the process would be, we would ask the solicitor to prepare a resolution for the next meeting. If you want to go ahead with this, I don't want us to forget it.
I think going forward, we can handle items number one and two with respect to a resolution on these two line items, and have some type of final format on it.
If I'll draft up a resolution and give them to their respective original sponsors to get some feedback on where we sit. There's an advertisement requirement for the way you establish these sort of expenditures in the charter. I'm working with the solicitor and the finance department on the appropriate way to post and notice that, so I'll make sure it conforms to all of that. There is still a large section of the capital budget that is not specified, it is appropriated for capital funds, but we haven't approved individual projects, so it's not a transfer. I don't really have any concerns going forward, I just want to make sure dot I's, cross T's, get a resolution in a good format for you.
Thank you, sir. And that would go, move us right on to number three in the continued business.
All right. That'll be discussion and update on juvenile hearing board appointment. Not sure if we wanted to tailor that, Council Vice President Roderick, or...
I think so. I'm not going to ask for an appointment, as I understand it, it's mayoral appointment anyway. My concern with this, and maybe a few more appointments, is that I just want to see them made. And I talked to Solicitor Marcello today, and he said he should have something for the next meeting for the juvenile hearing board. The police have indicated that they are continuing with it, but we do have some members that want to leave, but I would ask Solicitor Conley if maybe you could get us a list of any other appointments. I'm going by memory, there are a few that we haven't made, and I'll just mention one in particular, and excuse my cough here tonight and the sound of cough drops, but it sounds like, and it probably is a very minor appointment, but we've always appointed on Election Day a series of rates and measures. In talking with Mr. Fattato in administration, he did some research, and I appreciate that, and there really hasn't been a reappointment back, going back to Councilman Helder Cunha. So why this is important is because this is a person who checks all of, as an example, the gas stations in the city, and makes sure that the pumps are giving the paying public a gallon of gas, if they're paying for a gallon of gas, that they are regulated well, and I'm not sure how much beyond. There are other rates and measures, as the title would suggest, you know, markets with scales. We did have several years back, a person was charged with fraudulently charging customers, overcharging customers for, I won't get into the specifics of it, it was an auto delivery. So it doesn't sound like a lot, I don't think it's even a paid position, maybe the person gets a stipend, but they go and they check things and they put their seal on it, that the machine is calibrated. We haven't had that person in a while, so, and it's not even our appointment, I don't have anybody for the position, I just want to see it filled. So maybe Mr. Conley, through Mr. Marcello or yourself, you could look up any of those appointments that need to be made?
I will. I will say that historically, I believe the Solicitor's office has tracked all the boards and seats, and whose appointment is for which seat, et cetera, et cetera. I'm not sure if that list exists today or is updated, but we can certainly do that, it's something we've done in the past.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, councilman, and we'll move right along to new businesses.
New businesses. Item A, reports of other city officials, Dylan Conley, Assistant City Solicitor, with the Claims Committee report.
In executive session, there were three votes relative to claims, all were unanimous, there were two additional votes, they were also unanimous.
That had to be the fastest claims report on record.
I delivered exactly what is required, nothing more, nothing less.
Thank you. Thank you very much. You're adding more statements, remember. With that being said, we're going to move right along to the next item.
Okay, the next item is request for approval, $480,722 from the fiscal year 2019-2020 capital account for the purchase of physio control heart monitor slash defibrillators, an NFPA 1221 compliant mobile and portable radio for the East Providence Fire Department.
So just for some clarification, yes, and nobody gets to panic, it's not $480,000, that's a typographical error, so that should be an actual dollar sign there.
So that would be $80,000.
Somebody had to hit the shit.
Twenty-two.
Mr. President.
I don't know if we would have done that.
I was also just giving some additional information, even better news, not only we're going to cut $400,000 off the figure, but we can cut an additional $40,000 off the figure. At our last budget meeting, we appropriated $40,000 already, so I'd be looking for a motion to amend the agenda so that the item read $40,722. So that's 40722.
So that is a number that I am okay with approving, and I make that in a form of a motion.
Just made a big statement. I'll second the motion.
Mr. Conley, I heard more out of you at that than before this, less than this report.
So we have a motion on it for a second, it will call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Britto.
Aye, thank you.
If I may, just for the sake of the record, these funds are tied to two separate contracts. Both contracts are above and beyond the $50,000 threshold, so although it is 90% grant money, it still is our practice to approve those contracts because they're above $50,000. I anticipate having the request to delegate approval of those contracts to me or the mayor's office on the next agenda. Those contracts will already be attached, they've already been negotiated and largely agreed to, they just need council ratification.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
So we made a motion and approved for the $40,722, for clarity, if I'm not mistaken. Do we need to vote on the $40,722 as well?
Yes.
Okay.
So we've successfully amended the agenda, now we need a vote to approve, to appropriate the funds.
Make a motion to approve.
Second, second. Okay, so we have a motion, and it has been seconded. Then we have a roll call vote, please.
Yes, Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Britto.
Aye, just for clarification, that is for $40,722.
Yes.
$22. All right. And quick, moving right along to resolutions.
Okay, resolutions. Resolution regarding traffic control and speed cameras, Council President Britto.
So this is one of the demons that I've been dealing with over a four-plus year here in this city. You know, trying to combat the speeding in this city, not only in speed zones, but just throughout the city as a whole. And one of the things in previous discussions that we've had was, you know, whether or not the speed cameras are suitable for the city of East Providence. But I'm going to take it a step further, although it was, we had the discussion and talked about it, now I'm looking for a resolution to pass this, to pass the speed cameras for the city here. I want to make it clear first and foremost, because first thing that people say is that, you know, we're looking to generate additional income, and that is not by any means my imagination to do something as such. This is a public safety and public safety issue only. I've been battling, again, I've been battling this, battling this for some time now, and I recall with the former chief of police, Chief Porella, sitting now, speaking with him and some of his staff members about controlling speed in neighborhoods, cut-through streets, main streets. You know, you see with the do not enter sign, Pleasant Street, it had a lot to do with speed. I've talked with former Captain David, Captain David of the East Providence Police Station, Police Department, who no longer works there. Right around Myron J. Francis School, we had to redirect the whole traffic pattern in the morning, not only because of the drop-offs, but because of the speeding that had occurred in the area. I recall having community meetings with, excuse me, with the state representative, Catherine Kazarian, with the speeding on Pleasant Street, with some of the constituents that had some concerns. We met over at Weaver Library with a number of constituents with their concern with speeding. Again, and I've said this time and time again, that along with the sewer, as we heard Mr. Lewis come up and talk about this afternoon or this evening, it's probably one of the top, if not the top complaint that I received from constituents. And again, it doesn't matter if you're on a main street, a cut-through street, or any type of street in the city. And this is a problem that we're not only having and experiencing in the city here, but it's a problem statewide, nationwide. And we see that throughout some of the neighboring cities that we have, Providence, Pawtucket, with the speed cameras that they have, and one of the things that I've thought of is that we can learn from these mistakes. The mistakes that they have, if this goes through, that we can learn from those mistakes. So what I'm looking to accomplish here by this resolution, by putting up speed cameras in school zones only, and I just want the public to know, it would be only during the school time, it would be no different than what the General Assembly had passed, which means that it would go from August 15 to July 1. It would be from 7:00 a.m., excuse me, 6:00 a.m., 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. It would not be on weekends, it would not be on holidays or when school's not in session, and it certainly won't be during the summertime as well. And during this time, I would ask, in the event that this does go through, that the chief of police comes up and gives us an explanation or some type of reading as to what's going on every two months, every six months for the first year, and just update the public, update the council as to what's happening in the event that this speed camera goes, a resolution passes. I'm done with talking about speeding in the city here. We've seen the early part of January, January 2, to be exact, over by St. Margaret's School on Pawtucket Avenue, where a car literally went and sat up on a guardrail, where kids pass to and from every morning and every afternoon. This is a walking path that kids travel to and parents travel to, to go pick up their students from school, and here we have a car that was literally right up on that guardrail. Fortunately, nobody was hurt, there were no injuries recorded, at least that I'm aware of, and this is, this is a perfect example of why I'm looking to have speed cameras in school zones, and school zones only that would be. I intend on having, as I had mentioned the last meeting when we talked about having a public meeting, through my conversations with the city clerk, that I'm looking to have somewhat of a meeting the first, the second week of February, I want to give at least a one-month notice, where at least the public is well aware of this meeting, so they have their say as to which way, or I'd like to hear from the public as well. But for now, I'm tired of talking about, you know, the speeding, and I would like for the school department to really have their input on this as well. I've had conversations with state legislatures, state senators in the city, who essentially support this idea. I will invite them to the meeting as well, but for now, right now, I'm done talking about it. You heard me introduce 3D pedestrian walkways and speed bumps. I'm going to be looking forward to introducing that later on to the city as well. And more importantly, with our capital campaign going forward for next year, I'm going to look for a lot of those dollars to be spent on public safety. Because again, these cameras are only in school zones. Because again, these cameras are only in school zones. But then there's the cut-through streets and the residential areas as well that need to be addressed, that we need to really take a look at what's going on in the city with the speeding. And the last council, if you all recall, we set aside $10 million for road improvements and infrastructure. It's not going to get any better. The roads are going to be nice and clean and smooth, and the cars are traveling even faster now, which scares me even more that we have these roads that are out there that are nice and paved, and cars are just taking advantage of it, half the people don't even realize how fast it's traveling at this point in time. So I'm looking for approval from this council, and I'm hoping that we can have some type of conversation or dialogue with this this evening as to whether you're for it, whether you're against it, however it may be, but it's something that really needs to be addressed by this city.
If I may, please. I agree with what you're saying. You know, police can't be in every single street, every single intersection. It just isn't practical. I don't know if this is possible, but if this was to approve, any monies generated from that program, instead of going into the general fund, it would be my feeling that to further prove that it's not a money grab, that those money, that money be reinvested into public safety. For example, the speed bumps that you're talking about, those things are $12,000 for a set of four.
No, no, that was Councilwoman was referring to, retractable speed bumps. I'm talking about the, I've mentioned in other areas that we have the three-dimensional.
What I'm saying is that any monies that would be generated from those speed cameras to be reinvested into road safety, whether it be animated signs, speed bumps, I mean, take it or click it, you know, grants out there, speed enforcement, but if those grants dry up, maybe we should put that towards, you know, blocks of overtime for additional enforcement in key areas. I'm just saying that I think it's a good idea, and I think we can really expand on it by reinvesting that money into public safety. The neon signs, that's the norm now. They are clearly visible. There's a lot of options, but they're costly options, and that will kind of help pay for that and create safety around the school area, especially Cat Heights. I think that's a huge one on Pawtucket Avenue, and so on and so forth, so.
You know, I don't know if you all recall the commercial back in the '90s, BASF. We don't make things, we make things better. So I'm not trying to reinvent the wheel here, because obviously they're in other cities, but we can learn from their mistakes. The mistakes that they make by introducing it to the city of East Providence, we know at least what to avoid or what not to do. And what's according to the General Assembly, I have any intentions of following those and not deviating from the General Assembly passage that we had as well, which means that, again, will be, those cameras will be in operation during school time, the school time only.
I want to thank you, Council President, for bringing this up. I too have a resolution on the docket tonight that speaks to the similar concerns. Again, always a topic of reoccurring discussion in multiple areas throughout the city. What to is no different. And so just to, again, guide my support to what our council president has proposed in his resolution, I agree. It is something that the city needs to answer, the call of the public. You have elected us to be your voice, to stand up and advocate for your needs and concerns. And so that is what we're doing, in coming up with different techniques that may be beneficial to help the community, is what we're brainstorming to do and why committee meetings and community meetings are scheduled so that we could get feedback from those who aren't able to attend meetings or maybe communicate with their council members. If I could just do, kind of wrap mine in to yours, Council President, is that okay, my resolution, or would you like to take your vote first, and then I can speak on mine?
Just take my, I would say take mine, because it's on separately.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I just ask a question on that to the solicitor?
Yes.
And maybe Paul. Down the road, if you decide to go that route where we would reinvent that money, that could be done through a resolution, right?
I think that's a question for the. So the expenditure funds need to be done by ordinance. So if you want to create an enterprise fund or sort of like a revenue neutral, revenue raise must be expended equivalently, that sort of thing. I think you would want to create that by ordinance. I think you should do it individually, probably in the code of ordinances, and then recognize it in the budget ordinance from that point going forward.
Okay. Thank you.
To the chair, I just want to add my support to the chair's thoughts on this. I mean, there's no debate. Speeding is out of control everywhere. We're not going to solve it all, but I'm not prepared to not do anything. I think I'm willing, of course, to listen to public comment on this, but I can't imagine anybody is in support of speeding. The only complaint I always get is the money grab thing. I think we've all said that's not the case here. I think Councilman Murato's suggestion goes a long way to disavowing that claim. The money should go right back into public safety and under this umbrella. So it certainly has my support.
And going forward, I would say that in an event that this does pass, that the school committee and the school administration weighs in on this. I think it's important. I would prefer not to separate the two. I think whether or not who decides where the cameras, I prefer to have the school department, school committee, let them decide, or the administration. I'm not too concerned about that, but I would like the school committee and the school administration to weigh in on this as well. And, you know, provided that this does go through, we'll be looking for a public meeting. And what amazes me is that this is on the docket this evening. There's really not a lot of people here, obviously, to address this. We'll have a public hearing, and I'm sure people won't be too concerned or not show up to the public hearing as well. And the minute those signs go up, or the minute it's in the paper, this place will be flooded, I'm sure. What concerns? Hopefully not, but, you know, this is why I think it's important for us not to have this discussion this evening, but also to have a public forum on this as well.
Mr. President, I just want to throw out, if I may, and I don't want to get too far afield from the docket, but if you recall, you know, we had an ordinance here. We brought forth in draft format a couple of times with regard to the clearing of snow and ice from sidewalks. If there is a discussion down the road about, you know, a possible enterprise fund or something along those lines, you know, we heard from people saying, you know, look, it just gets too difficult for me to move around, you know, whether you have folks that have disabilities or a little bit older, and then they get dug in by plows. You know, maybe that's something that we could take a look at down the road. But again, I don't want to derail the docket, just to kind of.
That's a good point. Valid point.
I'll make a motion to approve resolutions. Resolutions. Item A, we got a traffic control and speed cameras. It's presented by Council President Brito.
So we have a motion by Councilman Murato.
Second.
For passage for a resolution, we got a traffic control. We have a second by Councilman Rodrick. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Cahoon.
I said aye.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No. Said aye twice. Aye, aye. I'm a Marine now.
Councilman Murato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Brito.
Aye. Thank you. Moving right along to resolution number B. Letter B.
Letter B. Resolution regarding support of legislation for expansion of automated traffic control signals slash speeding. Councilwoman Souza.
So this resolution kind of piggybacks off of our council president's first resolution, given the same concerns and passion throughout the community for providing safety for our children and residents in our neighborhoods. This is a constant complaint for many of the residents, and as state law, like Council President mentioned, statute is speeding cameras are within one-third mile of any school zone. Those are currently the only places where you can implement a traffic or speed camera, but there are other technologies that we can use in the community. Again, as we've mentioned tonight in other meetings, there are way of traffic light signals. I've mentioned in some conversations previously, there's technology where if you are speeding as you are approaching an intersection that has a traffic light, it will detect that your speed is over whatever the allotment is on that road, and it will trigger the traffic light to turn red. So a previously green light would trip red in an attempt to slow you down. And then obviously, if you have passed the red light, now that's a traffic violation that you've incurred and cured. Again, other devices that could be used, such as speed bumps, flashing pedestrian lights, there are different things that, again, could be used throughout the community that would help combat not only in the school zones, but in other high-traffic improbable areas throughout the community. And so this resolution seeks to support, asks support from our General Assembly, to seek passing some legislation to expand upon other safety traffic signaling devices throughout the community that would further help with our traffic safety concerns.
Any questions?
Pleasure at the council for any questions at this time. As you can see, we're a bit concerned about public safety, and we're going to be addressing those concerns from our constituents that we've been having.
Mr. President, I approve of the resolution.
Okay, so we have a motion for approval by Councilman Rodrick. Does anyone like to second that approval motion? We have a second. Roll call vote.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Murato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Brito.
Aye. Thank you. Moving right along. Item number four, introductions of ordinances.
Oh, there's one more resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry. I jumped the gun on that and crossed it out.
So item number.
Give us a reading on that, writing on the resolution then, please.
Resolution authorizing the mayor to pay invoices for pre-construction expenses for the New East Providence High School. Councilman Cahoon.
So this month's installment of invoices amounts to a total of $2,281,295.33. That includes payments to AI3 Architects, the Paragon Group, which is our program manager, Gilbane Building Company, and Thales Engineering, as well as to the East Providence School Department from the city for an amount of $18,813, which is essentially reimbursement of upfront or soft costs, just something that we've discussed before. Councilwoman Souza, you always ask me this question, and so that we are client, this expenditure will bring the amount paid to date for the school project to $17,553,986, which essentially puts us by cost nine percent of the way through the project by cost and budget. What has been done? I suppose it's probably too late, Jerry, I might be throwing your curveball. There's no way I can connect mine to, no? All right. There is a YouTube video for drone, there's a drone flyover. We do one every month, just to kind of track the progress. You take a look at that, that'll give you a pretty good idea what the building footprint looks like with respect, you know, it's right on top of the old building, so you can kind of get an idea of scale. In January, you'll see the foundation and footings complete. You will see the staging and delivery of steel begin in February. That is all on schedule, all on cost. We're actually running a little bit below cost.
Can you repeat that again, sir?
Delivery of steel.
Nope. The other one.
We're on schedule, and we're actually a little bit below.
Not one there.
By budget. Again, we're nine percent of the way through the project, so.
That's always a good sound.
Back yourself on the back too much for that. But, so the steel will start being delivered and going up in February. You'll see that continue to go up over the course of about four months or so. We'll be basically topping off in the June timeframe. The building committee is entertaining or looking at, you know, for those of you who've been involved in construction, construction major projects, there's something called a topping ceremony, where, you know, they put a Christmas tree or something on the top beam, and people can sign off on that, and that's kind of a nice thing to do. It's a good milestone in the project. It's about a year from when we broke ground, so it's kind of nice to look at that. But just so you're kind of aware of what's going on, there's more than the construction project taking place. The building committee is engaged in, you know, there are 50, I want to say there are 58 total subcontract agreements that basically have to be done as part of this project. And those are being reviewed and approved and awarded on an ongoing basis. You know, to date, I think we have 43 of them still to go, right? There's a lot of work to be done, but we've awarded some major projects, awarded some major subcontracts through that process, to include, you know, the beginning of excavation for underground utilities, et cetera, et cetera. Obviously, the big one is the steel. That's a big, big piece of the school. So the work is ongoing. The work is progressing as planned. Things are going well, and, you know, we've gotten some luck with the weather. This year, we haven't gone, had to go into winter conditions a whole heck of a lot. There's been a whole lot of weather. So we've gotten lucky there, which is good. So, you know, we'll keep doing what we're doing and look for the council's approval on this resolution tonight.
Councilman, real quick, is there also a steel camera on site to show the progress on a daily, weekly, monthly, annual basis?
You know, I don't know that there is.
I just thought of it when you mentioned the drone.
And I haven't even thought to ask about it, because, you know, we've all, in the building committee, we've got access to the site, and we want to go on and off and take a look. And we have had the drones, which kind of show you the big picture. When you get down on the site, and you're just looking at the foundation, you're like, great, you know, so what, you know? At least that's what I think. I know that there's people that, that's, you know, their art, and they would take umbrage with the fact that I said that. But, no, I do not think there is actually a steel camera on there.
Just curious.
We're just relying on the drones.
Okay. Very good.
Oh, and I would like to bring up, you know, Gilbane Company hosted the Minority Women Business Enterprise get-together a couple of weeks back. One of the goals, it's more than a goal from the state of Rhode Island, is that, you know, building projects funded with state money need to reach a goal of 10% minority women business enterprise participation in that project. Currently, we're at just short of 11%, you know, through all the work that we've awarded. The entire team is very focused on making sure that we come in north of that number. You know, some of the things like steel, for example, you come in five on steel, and that's a big piece of it, so, you know, you take a hit from that. But they're doing very good work to make sure that the community's engaged, people know about the opportunities, and, you know, folks are paying attention.
Thank you, Councilman.
So to that end, I move to approve the resolution to authorize the mayor to pay invoices in the amount that I stated.
Second. Roll call vote.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Murato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Brito.
Aye. Thank you. Now we may proceed to introduction of ordinances.
Here we go. Introduction in first passage. Item A is an ordinance, an amendment of Chapter Two of the revised ordinances of the City of East Providence, Rhode Island, 1998, as amended, entitled Administration Regarding Budget Ordinance, sponsored by Councilman Murato, Councilwoman Souza, and Councilman Cahoon.
Mr. Council President, I would like to table this to the first meeting in February. Would that give enough time for advertisement?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. We're going to move right on. Proceed to the next ones, please.
Next is second passage in public hearing, and it is an ordinance, an amendment of Chapter Eight of the revised ordinances of the City of East Providence, Rhode Island, 1998, as amended, entitled Licenses and Business Regulations Regarding Mobile Food Trucks, sponsored by Council President Brito and Councilman Murato.
If I may, through the chair, if we can actually continue, again, item 41A to the first meeting in February by motion, that way it's a date certain. It just helps me for notice purposes.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Roll call vote.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Murato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Brito.
And Council President Brito.
Aye, thank you.
And if I may, again, through the chair, to address agenda item 42A, this is the second passage. This is the mobile food trucks ordinance. There's a state law that was passed that synchronized how mobile food trucks were permitted throughout the whole state of Rhode Island. In general terms, you can just get your permit from the state, and you don't have to do individual processes within each town. Each municipality was required to pass its own ordinance that matches up to the state's language. This ordinance is identical to the one that has been passed in Pawtucket and in Johnston. It's no mistake, we're all kind of just trying to do the same thing at the same time. Makes it easier. The key provisions are much the same as what food truck permitting has always been. They still need, do need to get a permit from the City of East Providence, but really all they have to do is provide that their state permit is active.
Thank you, sir.
We make a motion, but we need public comment first, right?
This, yes, this is a public hearing. So with that being said, anyone from the public wishing to speak for or against this ordinance, please approach the podium. No one from the public's willing to speak for or against? If not, public hearing is closed at this point in time. May proceed. Counsel, with.
I make a motion for second passage, Section 2, second passage of public hearing, as advertised, licenses and business regulations, mobile food trucks. Do you want me to read the whole thing, or?
No, you don't need to.
Want to second that motion?
Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye, aye.
Councilman Murato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Brito.
Aye. Next item, please.
Oh, my goodness, why the German.
Still competing. Chief, we can be in executive session if necessary.
I just want to say before we do that, I just want to thank our clerk for these gigantic water bottles. I'm surprised no one had to take a bathroom break.
I feel well hydrated.
Oh, you're welcome, you guys.
Councilman, just a quick comment on the resolutions. Like Councilman said, should I read it? And we really don't have to, but I did get a couple of questions from people. I think I know the answer, but I would ask Madam Clerk, they are available before the meetings online.
Yes.
And so if someone is reading the agenda at home, or they're aware of it, you know, before the meeting, a couple of days before, whenever, as soon as it's posted, they can go online and see exactly what we have here, what we're voting on.
Right. You can go online to the city's website. You can see it on clerkface.com also. Another thing, if you have, if you don't have access to a computer for any reason or internet or anything, you can contact the city clerk's office. We'll be happy to make sure that they're printed out and, and make sure you get one. But yeah, the resolutions and ordinances, everything like that.
They are available, and I think, obviously, most people, if not everybody, has the internet access, and that is evidenced by the fact that people don't come to the meetings anymore. But we all know they're home watching. They're watching on delay, and then we get the calls after the fact. So that's, that's on the general public. If you, if you want to take your chance and come after the vote is made, okay, but the resolutions and all the information is, is available to you beforehand.
Actually, they're also posted in City Hall in the lobby, so if you're environmentally friendly and would just like to swing by City Hall and take a look, all of those are posted as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next item.
Yeah, it's a German.
Me too, Jimmy.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Murato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye, aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Brito.
Aye. Thank you.